Good evening. This is Luke Revan. I'm the Assistant Township Manager here at East Brandywine Township. And I'm speaking to you in my capacity as the online moderator for this regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, the Board is conducting this meeting by webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the Township website on May 7th, consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for this meeting was also posted on your, on the website and is visible on your screen. Township staff, including myself, are present at the Township Building for this webinar and will be operating the control panel. Also joining us remotely are Kyle Scribner, Jason Winters, and Ken Ader, as well as Township Solicitor Kristen Camp. All other parties joining us can hear me. Your microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by Chairman Scribner prior to speaking. To be recognized, you must first ask the moderator, me, of this webinar to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and address before posing a question. I'll now turn the meeting over to Chairman Scribner.
Good evening and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors regular session remotely for Thursday, May 21st, 2020, 6:30 PM. And for our agenda, just a reminder that tonight's meeting will be, a recording device will be used during tonight's meeting. And I'll start out tonight's meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So for public comment, again, the moderators just stated that you'll have to go through the board for that. But rules of conduct for the public meeting established by Resolution 2008, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. We're going to start out with the meeting minutes for the previous meeting of Board of Supervisors, April 16th, 2020. Jason, do I have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve the minutes. April 16th, 2016, as well as May 12th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to turn it back over to Luke for our treasurer's report.
All right, I'm going to read for the record the balances in various funds of the township. The general fund balance is $1,791,953.41. The fire services fund's balance is $78,063.45. The solid waste fund has a balance of $374,049.90. The traffic impact fee fund has a balance of $1,656,844.5. The open space referendum account has a balance of $2,603,752.32. And the open space fee and lieu fund has a balance of $74,193.57. The township capital projects fund has a balance of $597,763.60. The state fund has a balance of $165,521.11. The township's cash escrow accounts have a balance of $41,187.1. And the two pension funds that the township sponsors, for the uniformed pension fund, the last balance was $4,208,969.51. And the non-uniformed pensions' balance was $1,424,267.48.
Thank you. Let's take a minute to make sure that the finances are in order. We've, we've, I've already had a minute to look at these, but I'll offer that out to Supervisor Winters and Ader.
So I've, I've had a moment to read it as well. I had one question. So one of the new account codes added, I think in this month, and there were some reclasses, were the, for the COVID expenses. Are we, I think there's been some conversation, are we seeking, or I think there's some opportunity for state funding to offset some of the additional COVID expenses?
Federal funding.
Federal funding, okay.
It's, it's through the state. I actually have that in my report.
Okay.
Very briefly, but we, we've already submitted initial paperwork to FEMA. And they're the local agency for the federal emergency management agency.
Wonderful, okay. Is it, do we, do we have a thought on, on, or an idea on how much we're seeking to receive, or what we think that might be, or is that something you submit and they figure it out as they go down the path later?
Well, since we don't know how long this is going to go, we have no way of giving them an estimate. We simply have to provide them with the information. As far as, it's all done by the automated clearinghouse. So there's three forms that have been, well, actually, two forms have been submitted. There's one form that I still have to submit. But that will, that puts our foot in the door. And once this is, so, once the federal government tells the states what to do, then we'll, we'll be able to proceed further. But typically, we don't have storms or other disaster emergencies like
Sure.
this has occurred.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jason, you got any questions on the treasurer's report for the, for the finances?
Nope. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the payment of the bills that's submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I just want to circle back, Luke, for the public comment for non-agenda. I've been watching the screen. There was none. I just wanted to confirm that you still had none for the non-agenda, giving people some time to get their questions in. Only one I saw was from someone trying to get in to the room. They were in a problem. Anything else?
Ah, no one has indicated that they would like to be recognized at this point. I am shooting a future speaker a little later on the agenda.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll talk about non-agenda later. I just wanted to make sure for a, you know, for, I'm sorry, for non-agenda now. I didn't see any, but we'll talk about agenda later. I just wanted to cover bases. Okay, the Assistant Township, I'm sorry, Township Manager's report. We'll turn it over to Scott for that.
Thank you. For the July 2nd primary election, Chester County has combined the South Precinct, which is normally held at the East Brandywine Baptist Church, with the North Tufts Precinct, which is held here at East Brandywine Township's municipal building. Both, our electors from both precincts will be voting here at the Township Building. In order to help safeguard the health and safety of our voters, at the Township Building, the township will have the entrance areas, lobby, bathrooms, and meeting hall. Those areas will be thoroughly sanitized by BioOne, who we've been using throughout the pandemic from about mid-March forward to sanitize the employee areas, as well as the police areas. And voters are encouraged, I would highly encourage our voters to register through the Commonwealth's website to vote by mail at pavoterservices.pA.gov. My wife and I registered. We received our by-mail ballots today. It's very straightforward, and you simply vote and then mail the ballots back to the, I believe it goes to Chester County Voter Services, and there is an envelope in there. The only thing you have to do, place your ballot inside and put a stamp on it and mail it. One of the casualties of our COVID 19, of the COVID-19 pandemic has been our June 13th document shredding and e-waste collection event. It's hoped that this highly successful recycling event, which has, now we have nine municipalities participating. We hope that we'll be able to find a date later in the fall where we can reschedule this event. I just realized that I forgot to talk, or include in my report the fact that two of the three forms that are required by the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency and also the Federal Emergency Management Agency, they're actually federal forms, but they're sent to the state, have been filed as part of the COVID-19 pandemic. And as I said earlier, the, that gets our foot in the door. And once FEMA makes their decision as far as the timeframe for those reimbursements to occur, then we'll know what, what we can submit for. Currently, we're simply putting everything that are extraordinary events caused by the COVID-19 situation into a file, and we'll have that information ready once we know what the parameters are. The Board held a special meeting that was advertised, both in the Daily Local and, I'm sorry, it was advertised on our website as allowed by Act 15 of 2020. Held a special meeting May 12th. The Board approved Resolution 11 of 2020, which extended the face payments for the real estate tax and also the fire services tax to August 31st, 2020. This was, this change was authorized, I said, by Act 15 of 2020, which was signed into law by Governor Wolf on, I believe it was April 26th. And then later this evening, the Board will consider adopting Resolution 12 of 2020, which extends the face payment period for the refuse and recycling fees also to August 31st. I received word this afternoon that Alan Myers is planning to begin working on the completion of the intersection improvements at Bollinger Road and Horseshoe Pike as early as June 8th. There's a bit of a hitch that occurred today because PICO needs to return, or their contractor needs to return to make modifications to the temporary paving that they installed after they installed a gas line from Apple Cross into the Mapleview Development. So I'm hoping that that won't throw a monkey wrench into this, so that while traffic is down, that we can hopefully get this project done quickly while school's out and the traffic is less than anticipated. And then my final item is next Monday is Memorial Day, as everybody knows, when we honor those who served in the various branches of our armed forces, having given, given themselves to protect our country. I would ask that on Monday, May 25th, that you think of those who served in the armed forces, past and present, along with our emergency service providers, doctors, nurses, and the others who are out there on the front lines every day dealing with the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Luke, I'll turn it over to you for the Assistant Manager's report, please.
Yeah, well, my first two comments are more closely connected with my role as interim treasurer. In this evening's packet, your financials were longer than usual. I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that there are four new reports in there. The reason there are new reports is that beginning in 2020, we have new bank accounts to properly administratively segregate those funds that come from particular revenue sources and use those funds on only particular purchases. So new, this, this particular period is a budget performance report for the solid waste fund, a budget performance report for the, the, for the fire services tax, and a budget performance report for the open space fund. Also new this evening was a report of general journal entries that staff has made in our accounting software in the current reporting period. I welcome any feedback from the Board on the makeup of the new treasurer's report. But those 11 reports will be the ones I'm using going forward, but I do, I do welcome any, any feedback you might have. Also related to the, the change to have multiple bank accounts, I'm starting to make routine transfers fairly sizable between these funds. And we've not really had an opportunity to discuss with the Board your preferences for cash controls and preauthorization for moving between accounts. So I'll just give you two examples. On May 4th, I transferred about $252,000 from the solid waste fund to the general fund. And on that same day, I transferred $156,000 from the fire fund to the general fund. These two transfers represented a reimbursement to the general fund for expenses that were paid in 2020. Is because up until tax bills were sent in March this year, there was no balance in the fire services or liquid fuels fund. I, I have a recommendation for, for a way to police this kind of activity. And that is, I feel that the treasurer should be authorized to make inter-fund transfers, given the following parameters. The bank accounts should be all at the same banking institution. The bank accounts in question should be wholly controlled by the township. And electronic fund transfers to, to other accounts that are not controlled by the township should be subject to the same cash control rules we have for transfers via check. Documentation for the rationale of such transfers should be maintained in the physical account books for both accounts. Documentation of the rationale for such transfers should be recorded in the memo lines of our accounting software. And the Board should be made aware of such transfers via the new report this evening, the general ledger report, which was the 11th report in your packet today. And then I would say that no transfers via online banking should be allowed between the state liquid fee, the liquid fuels fund, and any other account. And the reason I suggest that is because of the particular report, reporting requirements required by the state for the liquid fuels fund. Just, let me draw an example that would be an alternate approach. And that was, the Board could direct staff to say, every time that one fund owes another fund money, you should cut a check. And then you should have members of the Board sign that check, and then you would deposit it. I'm just suggesting a way where I can transfer money between funds without needing to cut a check and go through the usual process of signatures. Do any of you have concerns about, about this?
I'm okay with, with it. I'm, I mean, right now, it's a little difficult where we're not in the building, so it's totally different. Normally, we're in the building all the time, so it's not an issue then, I don't say. Ken, Jason?
I'm fine with it. I think the, the general journal report that you talked about that's now included helps to capture and maintain transparency on those transactions. I also suspect that the volume of this should come down pretty significantly. I mean, the significant, I, I think it's fair to say, so correct if I'm wrong, but the significant driver of the transfers to date have been more related to the startup of our additional funds. That moving forward, we should see, while there could be time to time it's required, we should see a significant decrease in, in the, the volume of transfers. Is that correct?
That's correct, but they won't go away entirely. And I'll, and I'll give you an example. Each month, the, there is a, a transfer related to the fire company's fuel use. And so we need to purchase the fuel that goes in the tank. And, and that purchase for the fuel in the tank that they use comes from the general fund.
Okay.
So we'd be probably looking at no more than 24 transactions a year with that sort of activity.
Okay. Yeah, again, I think I'm fine with it. I think the additional reporting, the, the reporting that we have now is pretty expansive. And I think it, it covers the, the transactions from my perspective, oversight.
Okay, Jason, you have anything?
No, I think I agree. That's fine.
Okay.
Well, I, I just, I, I don't want to be moving such large sums of money around without any kind of oversight, so I thought I'd announce that on the record. I have just two other items this evening. One is that the restrictions on the solid waste program are starting to lift. AJ Blazinski will be doing the regularly scheduled yard waste collection on May 30th, and bulk collection will resume in June. And then lastly, this evening, in the last 30 days, township staff has created a account on Trello for project management purposes. We're still feeling our way around how that's going to work, but I think it can help to improve staff and Board communication on some of the big projects we're working on. I'm happy to at any time do a walkthrough of how it works with any member of the Board who is interested.
Thank you. Scott or Luke, are you handling the building inspector's report?
I have it. For the month of April, obviously, activity was down. There were a total of 16 building permits issued, one zoning permit issued, four use and occupancy permits were issued in, in April. Those were all in the, the State Sit Down Forge development, and they were, along with three in March, they were the permits that had forecast to be ready or near-ready when construction shut down on March 26th. Only seven inspections completed, and that's starting May, yeah. The inspections were for the State Sit Down Forge Station project, as well as two inspections at the Apple Cross Country Club project. Total fees collected, $9,385 respectfully submitted, Norrann King.
Thank you. Matt, for the Roadmaster report, please.
Yes, part of my Roadmaster report was going to be the culvert storm improvements, but I see that down further in the, in the agenda. So the only thing I have is we've received the lights from for converting interior lights in the administration building and maintenance garage over to LED. Road department personnel will be installing all the lightning, lighting, and changing some of the configuration in the meeting room from our control at time permits. That's the only thing I have for the Roadmaster report.
Hey, hey, Matt, do we need to notify PICO once the conversions are done? We do a lot of this LED where we have to convert, we have to let PICO know so they drop the rate. Are we getting billed on some of these poles by a different method?
We, we don't have any traffic. All the LED lighting is in the building itself, so the electric bill itself would reflect the
Okay. We don't have any negotiated rates with them?
No. The, the other item is that we will receive a rebate check from PICO. Taking care of that, handling that paperwork.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Chief, I'll hand it over to you for the Police Department report.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys are all doing well. Give you a quick COVID update. The Police Department has returned to normal scheduled operations. Officers and our staff are wearing masks at all times, and we are still practicing the social distancing guidelines while we're responding to our calls. The business offices are still closed and the public. And we just encourage anyone that needs to contact us to call the numbers that we have listed on our webpage or Facebook page and whatnot. On behalf of the Police Department, I want to thank all of our residents and businesses for their support, but most importantly, for being respectful of each, of each other and following the COVID guidelines issued from the state and county, even though at times we haven't agreed with them. In my travels throughout the township, I've seen very few concerns. And of the few situations the police have had to respond to, we were able to handle those concerns with very little issues. I encourage everyone to continue following these guidelines as we enter the holiday weekend. And remember that we have two goals here, to stay safe and to stay healthy. I have my monthly statistics listed on the report there for you. I won't read them unless you want me to. What I did include in the packet this month, as you will see, and I'm sure you don't want me to read the list, is the five pages of trainings that were completed by the officers in the Police Department during our staggered shifts. I had mentioned to you that we had officers completing all of their mandatory training, all of our research trainings that were online, and then a number, many, of other training courses that the officers took. There's a very lengthy list there for you to look through, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to see what we had been doing with the officers that were on staggered shifts working from home. We had one thank you from Sheriff Maddox for participating in the appreciation ride at the VA Brandywine Hospital. I also wanted to mention that we've received a number of requests over the last month from parents to participate in birthday parties, graduation drive-bys, those types of things, and we have been completing all of those, which have been going along. And then my final comment is I just want to, you know, commend all the officers in the department. They've really been sacrificing. They've been really, you know, just with us and trying to get through all of this COVID stuff over the last couple of months. We have had a few scares. We do have one officer that's on isolation right now because of a family member coming down with it. But for the most part, we've all remained healthy, and we've all been working as a team to keep the rest down within the department and outside, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Scott, are you doing, we don't have the Fire Department on board today, do we?
It's not listed, and I didn't see it in the packet.
All right, well, we can, I, I have it in mind, but it's not the other world. I don't have their, well, actually, I do. So I'll read it quickly. The incidents by municipality, the, the Fire Department monthly report, there were 17 in East Brandywine Township, and there was five in West Brandywine Township, one in Upper Euclid Township. Fuel usage for East Brandywine was 170 gallons, and I'm just reading through his notes real quick. There was no training this period, and that's all I see for him. Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to, for, to Luke for the old business, and I think we're going to talk about Bonfield Mill. You there, Luke?
Sorry about that. I needed to unmute a member of the audience. Actually, action item here for number 7A, or I'm sorry, 8A, is, respectfully ask the board table this. If you'll recall, we have an advertised bid specs out for Phase 1 and Phase 2 for the Bonneville Mill Park. Pinoni has been managing that bid, and they have issued an addendum extending the deadline into June. The reason they extended the deadline into June is twofold. One, they had a series of questions asked by the bid holders, the bid is being advertised on Penn Bid, that required additional field research, particularly to bridge ratings. And then second, we've had time, and Public Works Crew has been able to do additional test borings at the site. And we are waiting on tests on the earth and those additional borings done by Matt and his crew. So I fully anticipate at the June regular session, we will have a recommendation for an apparent low bidder to award the contract to.
The award bid for the Hawthorne Drive, that's, I guess, what Matt was going to talk about then?
Yes, thank you. We have received eight bids for the Culverston Run Stormwater Improvement Project and bid. The bids were opened electronically on May 13th at 11:00 a.m. Cedarville Engineering Group has determined that Eagle Contracting Incorporated is the lowest responsible bidder. The total base bid is $506,989. This includes all the stormwater work needed to complete the project. We are also recommending not accept the alternate, which includes the asphalt portion of the project, bidding this as a separate project. This project will be funded using two sources. The first is the 2018 Growing Greener Grant for $246,021, and the Public Works Capital Fund for $260,986. And I respectfully request the Board of Supervisors to accept the base bid from Eagle Contracting Incorporated for $506,989.
Matt, the only thing that I had on this was how, we're not going to, we're going to separate the asphalt, is there a liability for the work under the asphalt that is done by Contractor 1? And then if Contractor 2 comes in and does the asphalt, where they have, you follow where I'm going with this, is there going to be any, any way that they can say that the stormwater failed because of the equipment that the asphalt company used on it? You follow, you see where I'm going with that?
Cedarville is going to be doing inspections during the construction, so they will make sure that everything's properly compacted. I don't know if you remember, but about a year and a half ago, aqua came through and put a water line in down through the roadway, pretty much from one end all the way to the other. And they compacted that stone and put down base, and it has held up quite well, even though we had everything. So I don't really have a concern with the, you know, with the finished product for the asphalt, with a separate bid.
And that was the aqua issue you're talking about? That was the one where they were going to, they were going to contribute money to the paving later, I guess?
They did. They did.
You guys, Ken and Jason, you have any questions on this?
Jason, you have any?
Um, no.
The only questions I have then is the, so from a cash flow perspective, the 246 for the Growing Greener Grant, obviously, we'll have to front that for the reimbursement. What's the anticipated turnaround time from when we have to cut a check to Eagle Contracting to when the grant would then reimburse us on the 246 that we're, that they'd be funding?
I believe, like, I'm going to say from time to time, during construction, we can request grant funding. We don't have to request everything, you know, doesn't have to be completed, and request the $246,000 all at once. We can make partial requests on that, so that, that should help with the cash flow.
And from the request, the turnaround time's fairly quick, though, you're saying?
I am not exactly sure.
Typically, it's six to eight weeks. That's, that's the state's typical turnaround, what it's going to be during this time period with people teleworking. I can't give you a better answer than that, but typically, it's six to eight weeks.
Because just noting that the fund balance is currently a little bit less than the two amounts together, so just recognizing some impact on the general fund from a cash flow perspective on that, you know, akin to our earlier conversation on transfers, right? The other question is related to the Liquid Fuels Fund for the paving part. In a prior meeting, I think it was discussed that we were anticipating that payment for this year on March 1st. It doesn't look like we've received that yet. Have we heard anything regarding the Liquid Fuels payment for this year, for 2020?
Yeah, this is, I'm sorry, Matt, if you don't mind, this is a interim treasurer, rookie treasurer, mea culpa. There was an additional report required by the, by PennDOT to release those funds that I had not completed. That report's now done, but that was done in the last week and a half. So the delay in distribution is on my end.
So Luke, do you think that by the time that the pavers in, Matt, I don't know what the timeframe you were looking at, you know, what this project lays out at, do we think that those two will correlate?
I can't say. I'm not sure. Luke, do you anticipate that the Liquid Fuels check?
Well, I didn't inquire. Quite frankly, since, since I'm the one who missed the deadline in submitting the report on the financial health of the township, which is required, frankly, it's important to know right now, but I would have been a little reluctant to have asked before and say, hey, I didn't do what I was supposed to do, now tell me when you're going to do what you're going to do. But I will follow up and see if, see if I can get a timeline on the distribution in light of my late submission.
If you guys are okay, I'm okay with making a motion to, to make the disbursements after we have confirmation on the Liquid Fuels transfer into our account, so we're not rehashing. So I'm okay with doing something like that. Kristin, do you see a problem with that?
No. No, can you hear me?
Yep. You okay with doing something like that, Jason?
Yeah. So you want to just, you want to just, we should be able to disburse one of those funds from into the account to be able to approve the bid tonight?
Well, yeah, we would approve the bid, but we would not act upon it until we, we knew for certain that we had the Liquid Fuels Funds distributed into our accounts.
The Liquid Fuels, though, was just being used for the asphalt paving, which is not part of this award.
Right, but it was money in the bank is what I was assuming.
Oh, and I guess it's not part of this award, but it's important to note that the two projects have to go hand in hand together. And that's, that's the main reason I bring it up, because otherwise, you got a dirt road with, with stormwater under it, right? And just trying to make sure that are ducks in a row before we take on such a massive project. That's my only concern.
That makes sense.
So otherwise, Kyle, I would agree as well.
Okay. Jason, I lost your, your video. Do you still have audio?
Yeah, I do.
Well, then, yeah, if you don't mind making that motion.
All right, so we're going to approve, we're going to approve Eagle Contracting for the $506,989 for the stormwater work, but we're going to leave out the asphalt paving portion. Is that what everyone's going?
And then we would pen this on the, the transfer of the Liquid Fuel Funds.
Motion to approve Eagle Contracting Incorporated for the base bid totaling $506,989 for the Culverston Run Stormwater Improvements that were opened on May 13th, 11:00 a.m., and approved by Cedarville Engineering Group. It's going to include all the work for the alternate, which is the paving portion, and this will be contingent upon and awarded after the township receives 2020 Liquid Fuels check from PennDOT.
Actually, we're looking to remove the alternate from that bid and rebid the paving portion of the project. That, that.
I did say.
I'm sorry, it a little bit broke up.
Yep, so Jason said with the removing of the asphalt portion of it to be bid later, do I have a second on that?
But you also want it to be contingent upon receipt of the Liquid Fuel Fund into the township's account.
Yeah, that, that was said as well.
And it's, it's our anticipation that the, the bidding for the asphalt, doing it independently would be lower, right, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm not sure if we have Jim Baxala on the phone right now, but Luke, you can help me with that one if we don't. For the new business, we have the proposal to prepare a Pennsylvania Historic Resource Survey form for the Bonneville Mill Complex, the Beaver Mill. And if Jim's here, great. If not, Luke, if you could spearhead that.
I don't know if he knows, but his mic is live. Can you hear us, Jim?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Well, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the item that Kyle just highlighted. I previously sent a proposal over to you from RGA, specifically from Bob Wise. He's our township consultant for historic resource issues. The proposal is to collect additional information regarding historic structures in the Bonneville Mill community and to update our application to the PHMC for determination of eligibility for listing on the National Register. Now, to give you some history on this, we've previously submitted an application to the PHMC quite a while ago, I think it was four and a half years ago, and it's sat there languishing regard, regardless of my prompts every four to, four to five months. This year, there, there's a climate change over at the PHMC, there's, there's new people there, there's a different mindset, and we actually are getting attention. And we had a site visit after the New Year that included Elizabeth Raigh, R-A-I-R-I-G-H. She is the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Officer. So she, she is the one that is primary in making those decisions regarding eligibility for listing. And the site visit also included Corey Kegerez, who is from the PHMC, and Karen Marshall, who's the Chester County Historic Heritage Preservation Coordinator. And the consensus after that site meeting, which occurred earlier this year after the New Year, was that the, the historic fabric of the mill itself has changed enough where it's not going to stand on its own for consideration of listing on the National Register. We would need to expand the application to look at the community of Bonneville. And there, there are quite a few resources along Bonneville Road that are historically associated with the mill that, that is the community of Bonneville. And that includes the workers' housing immediately across the street from the, the parking lot. There's the, the house next door to that, which served as the post office and general store building. There's a schoolhouse and a couple of other historic buildings along the road there. And then at the top of the hill, there's the mill owner's house that's currently being restored by Rocky Stone. So we have their attention, and I anticipate we can get a review from the PHMC on an order of months versus the years that it's taken to get to this point. The cost and the proposal for doing this additional work, which includes research on these additional contributing resources to, to the whole community, is $5,546. Given that we didn't become aware of this issue until after the New Year, this is an unbudgeted item. And the reason I feel comfortable in bringing it up now, even, even with the anticipated tight financial forecast, is we're not spending money on other items that we anticipated we would be spending money on. For example, none of the historical commission's speaking events have happened this year. It's unlikely that the fall events will happen either. We have a PHMC historical marker for the Jim Croce House, and although we have the marker now, I believe, or they're sending it very shortly, the cost of doing the reception for the dedication ceremony will not be incurred this year. So there, there are some savings there, and I imagine there is possibly savings elsewhere for events that were planned for a community park that aren't happening or elsewhere. So it's an unbudgeted item, which is, is why it's a line item for your approval in today's meeting. The, the other thing I will add to this is the whole reason that we're looking for this designation of eligibility for listing, it's not the status, and it would be nice to have a status, but it's a threshold that will make Keystone Grants available to us. And the Keystone Grants are one of the few outside funding sources that can be used for the renovation or rehabilitation of the mill buildings themselves. Now, township has been generous in providing monies for the materials that have gone into the rehabilitation work, and we've been very fortunate to have the skilled volunteer labor to, to do almost all the volunteer work. But we've continuously looked for other funding sources to support the cost of the building renovation work, and there's very little out there. I've historically provided a couple of applications to the National Trust for Historic Preservation that unfortunately have not come through. So we have been active in looking, but, but this is one of the funding sources that's available to us if we get the designation of determination for listing. So I, I look at it as, it's a $5,000 investment for potentially tens, if not hundreds of thousand of dollars in future grant money, the potential of that.
Right. And just to reiterate, sorry, I'm trying to read the notes that are coming across the board at the same time as I'm talking. Just to reiterate, so the allotted amount of money that was, was part of the 2020 budget will not be being used this year. Therefore, this is just something that's coming out of the same pot of money, so to speak, but it's just wasn't a line item on there. Is that correct?
No. There is not enough money in the Historical Commission budget, which was fairly limited. We were pretty conservative in our ask, nor in the Bonneville Mill Park general fund budget to, to cover this expense. And so that's, that's why I'm asking, this is an unbudgeted item. We would be looking for, there is, there will, there is unspent money in the Historical Commission. in the Historical Commission budget and in the Bonsville Mill General Fund budget, but we would be looking for other funds that haven't been spent in other budgets to cover this.
Here here's my concern. And first of all, I want to accolades to every one of your your volunteers and and everybody that's working down there. Everybody's done a fantastic job. The grants that we've gotten, everything has been phenomenal. The work is looking amazing. But my biggest concern is we we, the board, made a statement back the last time when we raised our our contributions to the Bonsville Mill that we were going to take this against next year's ask only because we were almost doubling our budget last year. And we haven't even finished the year, and now we're needing more money. And I understand it's an important issue. Don't understand, don't.
Let me let me clarify, Kyle, that there's there's plenty of money in the rec fund budget for Bonsville Mill. What I'm talking about, there's a a smaller budget that comes from the general fund for expenses that cannot be used from the recreation fund. And and Luke can probably clarify that a little bit better for me. But I I think we had around $10,000 budgeted for from the general fund for Bonsville Mill Park for expenses such as the porta pots and things like that. So that's that's a much smaller number. The recreation fund, you gave us a budget of, I think, $90,000. And and last year, I I think you gave us 148, but but we gave back. Well, we didn't spend. There's no money to give back, but we didn't spend $60,000 of that. So, you know, I I think that's an indication that that we're we're trying to be frugal with with our money. We're spending it where we need it, even though we have a budget item that would cover expenses. We we haven't spent it because we we didn't need it at the time. So we gave back $60,000 this year, or last year, for the to the rec fund. This year, we have sufficient budget in the rec fund. It's expenses like this historical research, which would fall outside of the purview of how the rec funds could be spent.
Understood. I think it's important, as I said, to state that for the record so that people understand that we're not just saying things to say things. If the money was not used, that's 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 great. And it looks well for everybody that, you know, it wasn't used. It was it was, you know, credit to the account, so to speak. But, you know, I didn't realize that much was unused, so I'm glad to hear that. And and that pretty much, you know, answers my question. Ken, Jason, do you guys have anything?
As far as the, I I want to understand the professional services hiding to Bonsville Mill from Pinoni as far as the the drawings, as far as the CAD drawings, as far as his review of the of their Chester County Conservation District that was we received on May 15th, I believe.
Right.
Last week. As far as those, as far as those expenditures, are they not being, they are not being currently removed from the open space, from their budgeted items? It's coming from the general funds?
Frankly, I I couldn't say for sure. I believe it's probably coming from the township's budget. Luke, could you provide some insight there to that?
So so let's let's more narrowly define what what expenditures we're talking about. So so Pinoni's work has been in support of four total grant applications and for phases one and two. So two grants for each phase. And then also for the the first two phases, there is work for the hosting the bid specs, the the matter that was tabled this evening, the the bid specs work. Those invoices are currently being paid from the Open Space Fund and from the line item assigned to Bonsville Mill. That that's that's somewhat new. We 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 had been paying them from open space, but a different line item, particularly professional services, but from the open space fund. But currently, when I receive a bill for Pinoni's work in support of the grant applications or the bid spec work, I am billing those to the Open Space Fund and to the expense line item that is the development of the Bonsville Mill Park.
That was one concern of mine from, you know, over since we started utilizing the open space fee a little of. There was a professional occurred above and below the budget for our solicitor input and certain legal involving their applications for bidding and whatnot, as well as Pinoni's actual concept drawing. But he completed, so I just want to make sure that, you know, in line with them.
Yeah, if I can just rewind, I I described the current situation, what I'm doing with the bills right now. Historically, there were two other phases of work. From the period of 2014 to 2016, all expenses from the Bonsville Mill were coming from the the general fund and from two expense line items in the general fund, namely, the engineers, special projects, and from the line item for the development of the Bonsville Mill Park. One of staff's deliverables for your June meeting is a a complete history of the payments in that time period with an eye towards perhaps reimbursing the general fund from the open space fund. And then there's another interim period, starting last year, where the most of the, let's say, buying a box of nails or those sort of improvements that the volunteers are using or the the equipment that the volunteers are using to to stabilize buildings A and C were coming from the open space fund, but professional services were coming from elsewhere. So there's been multiple phases of this.
I I guess two, two, two thoughts or one, one question, one thought. And the question is, is it sounds like this has been something that's that's been thought of for a while now. And is there damage that's caused by tape, by tabling this in any in the 2021 budgeting process? Is is the question. And then the the other observation or thought at a minimum, it sounds like, you know, we're at a phase where we're going to do sort of really a few, a full overhaul review of all the transactions activities. And I personally, I would suggest we just hold off for a second and and sort of get, you know, everything sort of lined up and, you know, I's dotted, T's crossed before any additional expenditure. Because otherwise, generally, my, you know, I I struggle with any unbudgeted, any expense, any unbudgeted expense right now during a time of of really trying to focus on some fiscal conservancy.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just hoping that some of the unspent monies could be redirected to this. This isn't a lot of money in the big picture. And the only thing I would add to that with regard to urgency is we've historically had a hard time getting attention from the PHMC. We have their attention now. And if we're timely in getting in a revised application, the benefit would be that we could possibly get a result before the end of the year and open us up for consideration of Keystone Grants if we're successful with the application. So that's the only sense of urgency is we have their attention now. And it's a sweet spot, so to speak.
Is this expense eligible under the open space SADO, or is this a general fund expense?
It's a general fund expense, which is why I'm asking. If it was open space money, we we could adjust other funds. I mean, we we have a $90,000 budget this year of open space money. We could easily make adjustments to cover the $5,500 expense. As I said, it's a relatively small amount of money in the big picture.
Jason, no other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm just thinking. What is it really? It's just to update the Milling District?
What we would be doing is expanding our application to focus on the community of Bonsville. And to do that, we would need to do some additional historical resource to those contributing resources from the community besides just the mill itself. And and that's where some of this expense comes in. And included in the expense is the preparation of the application by a professional, which, you know, enhances the success rate.
So I mean, here's a thought. If one of the deliverables for June is to look at really the the account history on this for a possible reclass from open space to general fund, what if we table this till June? Because ultimately, it would be sort of, in essence, funding it. You know, before we commit to general funds for this, if we identify that there is some class opportunity, that may sort of change the the financial picture of this decision.
Okay.
But as the other board members as well, that's just one thought.
Yeah, I actually, me personally, I feel that the mill has been doing a very good job in general. But but as far as receiving grants, it seems apparent that the county appreciates their their work as well for the for other residents outside of Espry Mine. We will budget, I think that Jim will find the same statement.
You broke up there, Jason. Could you repeat that last sentence?
I I'm okay with it because I I feel that it's going to be beneficial for the future of the grant, you know, receiving grants. Later because of the village.
Was there, I I'm quickly trying to read through the letter, Jim, as you as you were speaking. The original proposal was the first, the 31st of January, and then it was revised, and the site visit was on the 28th of February. We lose Jim?
Yeah, hold on. I don't remember the original proposal date. This is a revised proposal dated March 4th. Yeah, I I see in the letter here, the original was posted January 31st, and we had a site visit on February 28th. I I think that the site visit of of February 28th is a walk around that Bob did on his own. I could not meet him there that day. The original proposal definitely came after our site visit with the State Historic Preservation Office, Officer of the PHMC and Karen Marshall. That occurred just after the New Year, about mid-January. So it was recognized that we had a potential issue with regard to the success of the application focused just on the mill itself and that we needed to expand that to the community. And that's when we reached out to Bob, and he put together the proposal that that came in the end of January. In February, I think he went out to ground truth some things and made some adjustments that we now see in the March proposal.
All right. I I'll tell you where I am with this right now. I I'm I'm a mixture of Ken and and Jason. So here's what I'm going to propose. I'm going to propose that we we give it a month to try and see if there's a way that we can change where the funding comes from, as Ken was alluding to. And then let's just, I'm I'm okay with it, but I would like to give us a safety net of of a possibility. And so if if Jason, if you're okay with making a motion that we approve it, but not before we find that out in the next board meeting sometime probably in June, I would assume.
To find out the additional, where we're going to, where we're going to fit it in it.
Correct.
Why don't we just this meeting?
I'm sorry, say again?
Wouldn't that be the same as just tabling it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I have no problem, but I didn't want the the mill to think we were kicking the can on this right now. I was just letting them know that that was my my mindset, that it was more not not, you know, the the giving of it, but how we would fund it.
I mean, I guess like, you know, I'm okay with a motion. If you guys are okay with just approving it now with the understanding that they're going to find the cost savings. We did something similar for the fire company for the replacement of this pump now. You know, with that, we were doing now to get the process going, but you have to report back to us. And we would have to maybe adjust your budget later on as far as the Bonsville Mill if they didn't.
What you meant, you were correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, mine was more related to the the fact that it's, you know, the management of the general fund and the work that Luke is planning on doing between now and next month as far as looking at these, some of these historical costs. And if there's opportunity to reclass between open space and general fund, which would essence would, from a general fund perspective, cover the cost without really feeling the impact of an increased unbudgeted expense.
And that's that's more or less where I was saying, if we could hold off until next month for this. But I'm I'm okay with the idea, albeit terrible timing. I think it's it's very important for our future there.
What's the consensus?
I think we'll just table it at this point, but understanding that we were going to hold off until next month and figure out if we had that opportunity to reclassify the the where the funds would come from. And Luke's going to work on that. So I'm okay with right now, even if Luke, if you wanted to make this an agenda item for for the next meeting. And I'm I'm sure, Jim, you understand where where we're coming from on this.
Yes, to a certain extent, I do. And realizing what Ken's talking about, I didn't realize they were looking to do to look at the historical spending and make some adjustments that would make it easier to absorb. I mean, you wouldn't even notice the $5,500 in that circumstance. So I can understand that as well. I I would just like to reiterate that this is can be considered an investment for future grant monies for the building renovation work where we have so much trouble finding funding sources for that. That's that's my final statement.
Okay, well, I do appreciate it, Jim, and and I'll have Lisa, I think she's on board here someplace. And and Luke, if you guys could could put this on for the for the for the June meeting, as well as we're we're looking into this for a separate issue anyway. So I think it's, we're not really putting you out too much on that one. Well, thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't believe we have any subdivision and zoning applications. We're going to move on to ordinance and resolutions for consideration. And I'll turn this over to Scott for the Resolution 12 of 2020.
Thank you. The, as I mentioned in my report earlier, the board did on May 12th. The, as I mentioned in my report earlier, the board did on May 12th enact Resolution 11 of 2020 authorizing the delay of, or I should say, the extension of the face period for the real estate and fire services tax. The purpose of Resolution 12 of 2020 is to do the same for the refuse and recycling fees. Kristen was kind enough to do a resolution for this. She said, we really didn't have to do it, but I, I think it was, it's good to put that, the thoughts in writing. So essentially, what Resolution 12 does is to temporarily waive the penalties and interest for collection of residential refuse and recycling until August 31st. And subject or on September 1st, the late fees and penalties become effective.
Ken, Jason, any questions?
Nope.
Nope, it's consistent with the, the previous discussions on the real estate and fire taxes. So pretty clear.
All right, well, I'll make a motion for number 12 of 2020. The Board of East Brandywine will temporarily waive penalties and interest for collection of residential refuse recycling if it is paid on or before August 31st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to Luke for Resolution 13 of 2020.
Yeah, the agenda shows that this particular action item is dot, 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 Luke Revan, but I, I think that there's a whole lot of people who contributed getting a revised employee manual to the finish line. I think first among them is Solicitor Camp. I appreciate her initiative and leadership in getting here. What's in your packet is a, a new redlined version of the employee manual that staff is asking that the board adopt this evening. There were a couple of issues that we discussed at our special session earlier this month that have been revised. If I could just draw your attention to one in particular, there was a conversation about the accrual of vacation time, and in particular, should an employee no longer have a, a relationship with East Brandywine Township, what portion of the vacation was payable at the time of departure? What, what we're proposing here is a little bit of a tweak on, on what we discussed. Basically, you would not be compensated i- if you left early in the year for your entire unused vacation. However, your days would be available for you to use as of the first day of the year. So we did not recommend in this a, a each pay period, a certain portion of vacation accrues. That's the only one I wanted to draw your attention to. Is there any other questions about the draft that's in front of you?
I don't have any questions. I've read through it, and I know we had a special meeting on this, Jason, and I should say special advertised meeting on this. Jason, Ken, anything?
Ken, I know you had the, the, the most concern about a system of accrual of vacation. Does, does the proposal meet your needs?
Um, I'll be honest, I'm not sure. I thought I read this, so. This is, so we had left that it would be an accrual model, kind of a standard sort of practice. Are we suggesting now that it's not, it's back to lump sum?
Luke, let me jump in. Can I jump in? Because there was, there was something that I was not 100% clear on, to be honest with you, at the special meeting. And that was whether or not, and I probably misstated it, that if in your employee handbook, you tell an employee they're entitled to X number of days of vacation upon the beginning of the next year, based on the years of service, if they are to leave the employment the following year, day two of employment, are you still required to pay them for the unused days? And the answer to that is no, if your employment handbook states a policy as to what you are entitled to and what you're not entitled to upon your departure from the township. So it, we went back to your vacation days are based on your years of service, the way the original draft had, but the concept of you being able to take all of those days if you leave mid-year has been deleted. Because now what we're doing is saying, okay, if you leave mid-year, the number of days, whether you're terminated, well, actually, if you're terminated, you don't get any of those days paid. But if you voluntarily leave the employment of the township sometime after January 1, you're not getting paid for all of the days that you're, that you accrued. It, there's a chart on page 31 that says how many days you accrue that you're able to be paid for after you leave the service of the township.
Yeah, so I see the, I guess, then this is where I got a little confused. I, I see the accrual chart on 31. So in essence, you're, it's there. The, the issue I, I still struggle with this because the issue is, is yeah, maybe it's not getting paid out, but you know, if I have, if I get three weeks in a year and I bang it and use it all out in, in January and leave in February, I've now, in essence, expend an unearned benefit.
Yeah, and I understand that. I guess the issue, there was some discussion with Luke and myself, and I think Scott participated as well, that it's difficult to transition into accrual. It wouldn't be able to be done until 2021 because the employees who started in 2020 were given the handbook before that gave them a certain number of days for the entire year. And how you, it becomes administratively difficult to keep track of. I mean, it's not saying it can't be done. So we, I guess, I thought, and I think Luke agreed with me, that we believe the board's biggest concern was just being paid for those days if you were to leave mid-year when you really shouldn't have been. So that's what we were trying to handle, that issue. If you just, yeah, I guess we didn't really think through the scenario you just raised. I mean, we could probably add language to address what you just raised, that, oh, I don't know, you can't really ask me to pay them back, pay you back after they've used those vacation days. So, and maybe Luke can speak to some of the administrative difficulties that he was perceiving if you went to full accrual.
Right, so the, I, I think among the problems you have is that the, the manual calls for unused leave to expire at the end of the year. And so if we were to start on January 1st of 2021, in each pay period, you accrued 1/26 of the leave that you were entitled to based on your years of seniority, you really wouldn't, if you were in the lower ranks, have earned your first day off until the second quarter.
Yeah, we addressed that, though. We, we addressed, and actually Scott identified it, is recognizing that we'd start this in January 1, 2021, that up to five days, one week, could be, could be carried over. And, and actually, you know, the, because it's not a lump sum amount, the, the, the manual was going to, was going to get updated to reflect that up to one week annually can be carried, or just generally speaking, can be carried.
Okay, well, then, then I would, I would argue that if, if we definitely wanted to go that way, we need to start the accrual system not January 1, but immediately. Because if, someone on January 1 would have, assuming they took the, let's say you were hired last year, and on January 1 of this year, you had your vacation days reset. And if you used those vacation days per plan, that would give you no vacation on January 1. And therefore, you wouldn't have had your 2021 vacation accrued until the second quarter of, of the year.
Can I add a comment?
Please.
The other option you have, too, is if you have an employee that took a lot of vacation time prior to leaving, you could also deduct that from their last pay that they would be receiving if they get paid on a biweekly basis. I mean, worst case scenario, that would be 10 days. So you always have that option if adopted.
Putting an addendum stored in?
Pardon me?
Putting an addendum in stored in?
No, I mean, you could do that now without even changing this. You, for example, if in January you give somebody two weeks, and by March they take the two weeks, and then in April they resign and leave, they've taken their two weeks vacation. Let's say, let's say seven of them, they weren't allowed to use, they're going to be getting a final paycheck of some sort. So you could calculate the amount that they owe the township and deduct that from their last paycheck before giving them their last pay. See, the problem, the, the issue I see with what you guys are doing right now, it's not an issue. If you want to start the accrual, the only way I see doing that, I mean, you could tell all the employees you're going to start doing that next January, but nobody then gets any vacation. You could start it with new employees, but what that means is you don't get any vacation the first year. So that, that's where the PD is different. The first year you're hired as an officer, you don't get any vacation time. You're earning your vacation time for the following year. So that, that's how you, that's how we're able to keep track of that. So for example, if an officer is out on long-term disability, like we have one right now, he hasn't been here half the year, he hasn't earned six months of his vacation for next year now. Again, it's a record-keeping thing. You have to keep very meticulous records, but that is another way of doing it. But I mean, have we ever had this problem, Scott? I don't think we ever had.
No. No. Because the accrued vacation is going to come with years of service. It's not going to be something where someone starts out, you're going to know who your bad seed is in the first year for sure.
True, yeah. I mean, we, I know with Rose and Jackie, we've never had this problem, so. Yeah, I, I mean, if it was me looking at it from the way, the way you guys handle this now, I would just deduct the time they owe you from the last paycheck they get. I mean, Kristen, is that okay to do?
I mean, I can probably come up with language. I don't know administratively if that, you know, I don't do the books there, so I don't know. I would be also quite honest, I, after our last meeting, I went to look at a lot of other municipal employee handbooks, and I didn't see any that used accrual. Not to say you can't, but I was trying to find language that I thought would be suitable to cover what you guys were concerned about, and I didn't see any.
That's interesting. So are you saying that, because again, you know, where I struggle, this, this to me just feels like a very unconventional model. Are you suggesting that the majority of municipalities that you, or the ones that you've reviewed all provide a lump sum vacation benefit on January 1 of every year?
Yes, the ones that I, I looked at all of my municipal clients' handbook, some of which had been recently updated as, as late as the December of 2019, and they all used beginning of January, a certain number of days based on your years of service. So I, I would need to, if, if the board is not comfortable with the way this is written now, and just wants to go to straight accrual, I'm going to need, we're not going to be able to adopt it tonight, because I'm going to have to go look for other resources. I was going to do that. I was going to look more in the private industry to see if there was examples in the private industry, but in the public industry, the, the resources I had available to me were not, I did not see one.
So, so I, I've also projected a, a chart here that kind of shows my concerns about a, a, a transition to accrual. If, if you were to say, when, when is a leave available for an employee to use? The blue line represents the current system. Basically, each year on January 1st, you get the leave you're entitled to, to use over the course of the year. The accrual systems are the slanted lines. And if you started an accrual system mid-year, which represents the yellow line on here, they would actually have less leave to use in all the way up until about day of, of 2021. But I think it represents a, a, a benefit cut that wasn't quite the intent of the board.
Of course, you printed that out on a graph. Thank you, Luke.
Yeah, I couldn't follow that. And this is where I was like, this accrual thing is getting a little more complicated than I thought the board wanted. So where I sort of threw my hands up and thought, again, went back to what I thought I heard as being the biggest concern, which is people leaving early and basically screwing you because they've used all the township, they've used all their vacation knowing they were leaving.
So Jason, are you okay with waiting until we get this, this? I, I would have to say we're 100, or 99.9%, we're just trying to retrofit this, this vacation issue. Are you okay with tabling this? Or, because obviously, we, we don't have the verbiage right now to make everybody happy.
Well, if you table it, you need to give us direction because I'm not clear what the majority of the board wants us to say.
I, I think where, where, I, I would be with Ken on this. I was just going to say, I think I would be with Ken on this, where if we're kind of not the norm for the accrual system, what, what the other townships or possibly private sector are doing would be better to understand, you know, more importantly, the townships for my sake, but to make sure we're in line with what everybody else is doing.
Well, that's what I said. You are, your current policy of, of having a certain lump sum number of days at the beginning of each year, that is the norm from what I reviewed. Going over to a straight accrual where you have to work a certain number of days to earn a certain time, you know, you have to earn, you have to work a certain period of time before you earn one day, I don't think, again, based on my limited review of the municipality I represent, I did not see that as a model. Not to say it doesn't happen in the public world, but I didn't see it.
So the current system that we're using is accepted in normal practice? What, what was brought out in our newest is, is different? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. No, what, what's in 406 now is similar to what's in your current manual. And, and the twist is that we added that if by chance you leave mid-year or before the end of the year, and you have to, you're, you're not entitled to, if you haven't used all your vacation as of the day you leave, you're not entitled to be paid for all of that vacation you have not used. You, there will be a calculation that's performed as to what you would be entitled to be paid for based on the number of days you worked that year.
Ken, what do, what do you think about putting wording in that says an employee, even though it's front-loaded, an employee may only use half of their time prior to June 1? And it would be different for every employee, but it would at least put in a, I guess, a barrier there that they couldn't be able to use it all up.
Yeah, I mean.
Can you lock down somebody's vacation usage? I mean, are you talking about in the beginning, the first year or two? Are you talking about?
No, if, if, if I get two weeks vacation and they put it on the books on January 1st, you say you're only permitted to use one week of that time prior to June 1st, then the other week kicks in after June 1st. So for example, if I, it, it, it makes it easier to recoup it because then if I use five days in January, and now I leave in February, I'm going to owe you guys four or five days. You have a two-week pay period, you'd be able to recoup that out of their last pay with no problem.
Basically, it's bringing, basically, it's bringing a, it's bringing sort of a, a middle line in between the blue and red line on its charts. I mean, it certainly does. In essence, it sort of finds a little bit of a middle ground between an accrual and a lump sum because it basically says it takes that lump sum and cuts it in half, right? I mean, I think something like that, to the extent it's legal and appropriate, certainly addresses the spirit, as well as language that says that, you know, that, that's currently in there as far as the, the prorated values, you know, your, that your final pay could be deducted up to any, you know, prorated values of, of overutilization.
One thing that the lieutenant just texted me is that his wife uses accrual leave where she works. He said he would be able to get the wording. He said he would be able to get the wording for the board to look at if they wish. And he said the way you would start is that you just front everyone a week of vacation in the beginning of the year, and then the accrual starts, and then if they have to use some time, they've got it, but then it would just continue, and then you could start building. And then he could get that wording for you to take a look at.
Well, let me, let me just add my two cents in here. I, I don't, turnover is not a problem at, at East Brandywine. And, and I don't think that, that amending the terms at which the, your unused vacation is reimbursed to you, or frankly, even billed to you, is going to be a problem. What I do see as a potential problem is the, exactly how the, the transition is handled and exactly how it's administered. It, it seems to me like if the concern is that we're providing a perverse incentive for someone who's considering parting ways with the township to leave on January 1st so that they can cash out a big lump sum of vacation, we can fix that problem. But I, I don't frankly see adding a, a, an administrative albatross when we can correct for that problem through language relative to, to, to their departure. The, I, I just, I feel like the, the, you have 14 days or 10 days of vacation as of January 1 to use at some point in this, uh, over the course of the calendar year, is just vastly easier to administer, and especially given that, that employee separations are quite rare.
All right, so Jason, I guess that we're not confusing this issue anymore. Are you okay or not okay with the verbiage that's in there right now?
I think I'd probably prefer to have it changed a little bit before we adopt.
Okay, so then, and Ken's already stated that you had some issues. Let's, let's go ahead and table this to the, to the next meeting then. And I would ask that, like Kristen stated, she needs some, some dialogue here before, so she knows what exactly she's looking at in order to get this to us.
Okay, so the, the revised, the, the draft that's before you in June, shall it say a provision by which unearned vacation is reimbursable to the township should you sever company? Or should it say that we are to come up with a, a, a procedure where vacation is earned by per pay period?
Uh, y- y- you know, I, I think in, in many ways it it gets to the same, it really gets to the same spirit, right? So, you know, probably a little bit begrudgingly, I'm willing to sort of go, you know, go with the, the, the benefit, you know, in January in essence, assuming that there's this language that basically is utilizing this chart in, on page 31 to make the employee liable back to the municipality for any unearned vacation for that time period. So said differently, I think what your chart really here is saying, it is basically an accrual model, you're just not managing to that on a day-to-day basis, but come the time that there is a, a, a risk, which the only risk I think we've all established is separation, that, that's, that employee's sort of separation is utilizing that, that calculation to, to do that. So, so um, I'm just trying to reread the language here to make sure it's, you know, it's saying it.
If I could use an example just with some round numbers, let's say an employee has two weeks vacation. On January 1, they get both weeks vacation. In February, they take both weeks vacation for a ski vacation, and in June, they quit. They would have only earned half of their two weeks at that point. So their severance is going to actually deduct a week's pay from them.
Understood.
So why don't we do this, guys? Why don't we do this? I, I don't want you to be unhappy with this, this is, you know, this is a new policy that we've taken this long to get to. Why don't I come up with different language? What, one to do what Luke just suggested, and the other to take a look at what the chief said lieutenant had a, a full accrual policy example, and we can get it to you in the interim between now and the next meeting, and you can decide which one you like.
So Kristen, is this something that we would need to address at the public meeting instead? Would that be better to, in other words, you, you guys come up with the wording and the verbiage and then we pick it at the, at the next public meeting?
Yeah, I mean, you can individually tell me your thoughts about it, or tell Luke your thoughts about it, as long as you're not all three going back and saying which, which way you like it better. So that's fine.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll get you the options via email in between now and the June meeting. You can individually let us know what your preference is, or the language we send, you know, sort of does it, but you'd like some tweaks, you can provide us that insight, and then we can bring it back and put, insert that language into the entire policy section 406 for you to consider for adoption at the June meeting.
You guys good with that?
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Do, and Luke, I guess I'll ask you, I haven't seen any, but we'll ask if there's any public comment on agenda items.
There are two members of the public in this room, and both have declined to speak.
Thank you.
Kyle, if I could, there was one thing that I, I can't believe I forgot this, but both Luke and I were attending a, a meeting of the Municipal Managers Consortium yesterday, and Bob Cagle from the, the county, he's the county administrator, pointed out that the county commissioners feel that Chester County is pretty close to be able to reopen, or as they say, relax restrictions for us to get into the yellow phase, which would allow for slightly larger group gatherings still at the CDC and Pennsylvania Health Department requirements being in place. And I saw today, the commissioners apparently made a, a statement yesterday, late yesterday, that they're shooting for June 4th, relaxing of restrictions. They're working with the, the state on revising what they call the metrics for relaxing those restrictions. The commissioner, Commissioner Kitchline was told by Governor Wolf that, at a meeting, that she attended a virtual meeting, that the state will not consider, or will consider individual counties rather than a group of counties such as what we have in Chester County, Southeast Pennsylvania. So that's good news because it was clear that if we, we were held in with the rest of Southeast Pennsylvania, it's unlikely that we'd see yellow designation before possibly July, possibly August.
Right.
So we're crossing our fingers that that may come true. What Mr. Cagle said was early to mid-June. So we're going to hope that that happens. I'm sure you're aware from some of the emails that I've sent out, the county has, has been at the forefront of antibody testing. They're working on getting six additional sites around Chester County for both antibody and the nasal swab testing. And it, it, it was good news yesterday that we're going to be able to relax some of these restrictions and get people in businesses back to work.
Yeah, and I, I saw that as well, and I got an email on that. I noticed that the county was very strategic with their wording, but it, it alluded, it alluded to, there could be some, some issues on, on, good news on the 4th, and that's how I read it. Thank you. All right, do we have any, we had no public comment on agenda items. Just a note, an executive session for the purposes of coordinating an emergency response to the COVID-19 pandemic was held on April 30th, 2020. And I believe that's all that we have. Other than that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.